I'm here in the study.
We have these two. And I'm Joe. Yes.
Good afternoon, Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and distinguished members of the Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry Committee. My name is Nathan Wasworth. I represent District 70, which is Brownfield, Freiburg, Partal Level, Porter, and my hometown of Hiram. I've come before your committee today to offer testimony in support of LD 991, an act to amend Maine's genetically-modified food products labeling law. I have a young family with a two-year-old and a nine-month-old. My wife and I make sure we know all we can about the foods that we provide for our children. Okay, in reality, my wife is actually the one that reads the labels and makes these nutritional decisions. An important clarification, because she is listening at home today. And I'd like to actually be welcome to whatever healthy meal that she has taken the time to prepare this evening. This morning, it was actually stewing thawing from our farm. In all seriousness, I think it's important to explain what this law does, not do. A labeling required does not mean that GMO foods are banned in Maine. I'm sure most of you have had the shared experience of making less-than-responsible diet choices following some of these marathon public hearing days. This law is not about government making choices for the people. It is about empowering people to make these choices themselves by providing consumers with some very basic information. I realize that at this point in time, researchers have not shown a direct causal relationship between genetically-modified food consumption and a particular disease. However, you will hear from some of those experts today that will explain heightened incidence of certain medical conditions tied to consumption of GMO foods. There was a time in this country where we don't know that, where we didn't know that smoking cigarettes was unhealthy. Similarly, the EPA allowed use of DDT for decades before Rachel Carson published Silent Spring and educated thousands of parents about the heightened potential for birth defects in children whose mothers had ingested foods that had been treated with toxin insecticide. I'm sure you will hear some arguments about how this will put Maine in a non-competitive position, causing increased food prices. I feel like I've come to know a lot of people around this horseshoe pretty well over the last few months, and I'm positive that you're too bright to be fooled by these scare tactics. Let me shed some light on that for you. The clerk is also passing around a study from Emory University Law Professor Joanna Shepherd Bailey assessing the California Right to Know Act. The study shows that a maximum, this change would have cost each California taxpayer a grand total of $1.27. That's not annually. That is a one-time cost. I might add that Prop. 37 failed by a slim margin in 2012 as consumer interests were outspent five to one with Monsanto and industry allies spending $46 million to influence voters. That is more than all the money that was spent on all elections in Maine last year combined. I'm all for free speech, especially political speech, but those are staggering numbers. Ninety-seven percent of Maineers support the right to know. You just heard Representative Coolier read testimony from Ben and Jerry's. I don't even think ice cream has a 97% approval rating. I appreciate your time, and I ask that you take care to make a considerate decision with regard to LD 991. Thank you.
Questions for Representative Wasworth? House Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Representative Wasworth, for your testimony. What do you raise on your part?
We have a beef farm with 25 head of beef, and some vegetables in the summer. Thank you. Thanks.
No further questions. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Welcome, Representative Bates.
Thanks, Senator. Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and distinguished members of the committee. I would like to, in the sake of brevity, knowing that there are a lot of people here with valuable information to give, just wanted to give a couple of remarks. I'd be open for questions. I can provide my original written testimony to the committee if they would like it, but I will not, with the chair's permission, just give a few comments that are not consistent with what I have written.
Proceed.
Thanks, sir. So, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Representative Dylan Bates. I represent District 35 in scenic Westbrook, Maine. And unlike the several testifiers before me, I am not a farmer, but I am, my mother is an organic farmer, and I've grown up in a scenario where we grew most of our own food. The reality here, and the reason that I support Representative Dunphy's bill, is that the court of public opinion has already spoken. You've heard the 97% number drilled into your heads. I don't need to repeat it, but that's hard to ignore. The reality is that this problem of needing to know what's in your food is really a very recent one in human history. For the majority of our existence, we've always known what was in our food, and as such, we shouldn't have to fight to get it back. I understand the protection measures that were intended by the original bill, but I do not believe that we should be beholden to New Hampshire, or for that matter, any other state. Someone does have to lead on this issue, and if we want to truly live out the mantra of our state's motto of "Dirigo," meaning "I leave," I think this is the time to do it. I'm also here as a representative or liaison to the youth caucus, which is the members of the House and Senate under age 35, who, the vast majority of whom, have elected to support this measure as we feel it's very impactful for a younger generation, and I'm prepared to answer any questions in that vein as to how it pertains to younger people or anything else that I can be of help with.
Questions for Representative Bates? See, no, thank you.
Thank you.
I believe that concludes the legislators.
Thank you very much. Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, I appreciate very much the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Jody Spear. I live in Harborside. Like many non-scientists these days, I've learned to make informed judgments about genetic modification of food crops. I know, first of all, where to find reliable information distinct from disinformation propagated by vested interests aligned with multinational trade and chemical industry groups. I've listed some of them here. Rather, the most credible sources are Union of Concerned Scientists, Institute for Science and Society, Institute for Responsible Technology, Beyond Pesticides, and Center for Food Safety. For many years, these organizations have shared findings of experts in the field. Some of what they tell us: Far from being precise, the technology is unpredictable and unstable. The Center for Food Safety scientists explain the problems in the engineering of the new Sempra Innate Potato, recently approved by FDA and USDA. This is an experimental GM food designed to produce fewer carcinogens when cooked at high temperatures, inadequately regulated, and therefore dangerous. Indeed, unlike the New Leaf Potato, now off the market, containing the VT gene, technically a pesticide, which came before the Maine pesticide control board and was, of course, approved, the innate would have no such regulatory oversight. If this potato were grown in Maine and marketed, we would have no way of knowing we were consuming an untested food engineered through a process called RNA interference. Unless it were labeled, we would be guinea pigs in a mass biological experiment. The doctrine called substantial equivalence, which guides USDA and FDA approval processes, is a travesty. Patenting of GM crops invalidates the argument that they are equivalent to non-GM crops. For these reasons, I support the removal of the trigger clause before the labeling law takes effect. Imposing that condition during the last legislative session was a mistake. An act meant of a labeling law here will accelerate progress in Massachusetts and New Hampshire in passing the same law, thus achieving the five-state aggregate. I am testifying in favor of LD 991, not solely for the right to know. Experts I trust have convinced me that GMOs pose unacceptable risks for human health and the environment, and identifying them is a step toward rousing consumers to reject them altogether. If labeling were to increase costs temporarily, I'd consider it money well spent as a form of insurance. With a few seconds remaining, I would like to say that the same technology used for the New Leaf, for the Innate Potato are the ones that are used for the Arctic Apple, which is supposed to be coming to Maine, and...
Just finish that sentence.
The Institute for Responsible Technology has an article online...
Thank you.
...that you will find very informative.
Okay. Any questions for Jody? Representative Yoon?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are you any relation to the former commissioner?
We have a remote ancestor.
I see.
We did grow up in the same town, with my mother as a teacher in our one-room school house.
Thank you.
That's all I do.
Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, members of the Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry Committee, I'm Lance Harville, and ten years later, I'm back here. On LD 718 that passed the legislature with 141 votes in the House to four and 35 to oh in the Senate, I am here to testify neither for nor against LD 991, but to share concerns I have and to make suggestions, and feel free to take my advice. Those of you that have been here a while know that when you run up those kind of numbers in the House and Senate on a topic so controversial that it didn't come about because you made rash decisions. And I can remember standing in this committee room and outside this committee room with many members here, Senator Dillon and I, trying to figure out what contiguous meant, whether we should have 10 million, 20 million, how many states that should be or shouldn't be. These were not decisions that were haphazardly thought of. In the end, I will say that I never liked that we compromised on contiguous, but what it got us in the end was the governor. And once we had the governor, victory was ours. At the same time, in Washington of that year, we thought, those of us that support GMO labeling, that support right to know your food, that what happened in Washington, we were quite confident that we might win there, and how that may or may not affect this bill. And we ended up losing the referendum, so that changes the dynamics one way or another. Will Rogers basically once said that there's three types of ways that you learn. You can read about it, you can watch others do it, or you can urinate on a fence yourself. I've handed you a copy of the governor's letter that was written to me and to Senator Johnson in 2013 about why he recommended that we wait. And the reasons for waiting on that trigger today aren't any different than they were then, and that is that the legislation could be costly and its outcome not assured. And my fear, as having moved forward to this in the past, is that if you rashly make this decision, right, you could jeopardize everything you worked for to this point. Now, we do know that there was a recent court decision, it just come out this week in Vermont, what is, what it said is, they didn't dismiss it, they're allowing it to go forward. If you move forward to this bill, all you will immediately get is yourself embroiled in the legality. Anything that you learn or don't learn from a Vermont decision that might allow you to tweak your bill or to make changes that you would have to do, you will not even have the vehicle to do it with. And so I'm concerned about that. And a couple of other things that I would like to comment on, one of them was that the Ben and Jerry letter, I want to talk about critical mass. Critical mass has always been an essential idea, that we need some kind of economic critical mass.
Your time is up, but could you comment on Ben and Jerry's?
Just that, at some point, I've always believed that you need some kind of economic critical mass to make this viable. And please, I would really appreciate some questions, having been through this process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Representative Harville. Do you remember that I was one of the people who said, "I will vote for this compromise, but next session, I would like to see this trigger removed"?
Yeah, we all, everybody was in different positions on it. My position was always that you needed some kind of trigger. I didn't like the word contiguous. And I will say this, that the organization pushing this, right, you know, they weren't here two years ago, and they weren't in New Hampshire when we lost this by 20 votes. And there were members that were, I mean, I went over to New Hampshire personally, testified to move that, we lost that bill over there by 20 votes. So the thousands of dollars that they're pouring in here, that would have helped if you'd have got Massachusetts and we'd have had that, then we'd have one more state standing with us that makes this even that much more viable.
May. Can you comment, then, on the recent publication around glyphosate possibly causing cancer? Because that wasn't before us two years ago.
No, I think it's valid. All my concerns are the health issues on this, and they were there. First of all, glyphosate is the Roundup used for the crop. It doesn't necessarily explicitly deal with genetically-engineered crops. What genetically-engineered crops, that's used as weed control, right? So even if you found this, obviously, this would be a major impact to Monsanto. We know this. And those health concerns are still valid. We raised all these. These are all in testimony that was given in this committee before. It's in testimony that was given by myself on the House floor two years ago. So as they move forward, what that means, and you're talking about the European Study of the World Health Organization, I assume, is, what that means is, first of all, they came up with the word probable. It was probably, it was not, it was not a definitive statement. But that will all be in the court case. I mean, I think it's valid, there's a court case going forward. But while you're watching this unfold, why would you put yourself in a position where you don't have the ability to make changes as you might see necessary? I mean, it could be something in the Vermont decision that the court says, "Yeah, you can do this, but you can't do that." If you have a vehicle where you say, "Oh, okay, we can tweak our legislation to how the court is ruling," then I think you're in a great place. And, or if you want to lift the sunset or pull the word contiguous, but I think you need some kind of economic critical mass on states, and Maine going alone, I was never in support of that. I met with Moffcough on my picnic table in my lawn in 2012, when I laid out how I was going to do this and what I thought our chances were. And, you know, I just think that if you make a rash decision while this is going on, you think you might be further than a question, you could actually make it work, and it's a little bit better to watch this unfold. That's my opinion.
Now, you're getting your wish first, Representative Black, and Senator Dillon, and maybe House Chair has another question.
Thank you, Lance Harville, for being here, and appreciate all the work and time that you've put into this over the last two or three years. Could you expound a little bit more on Vermont, how the Vermont lawsuit is going to affect us and the costs and ramifications of that?
Well, okay, Vermont, the difference between, first of all, to clarify what Senator Johnson said, Connecticut actually passed this before we did with the two-state trigger, and they were among us a lot, and you guys can remember that in 2013. And the bill wasn't actually signed until January 2014. The reason that a lawsuit can immediately go, and this is going to be layman's legal terms, could go forward in Vermont where it couldn't in Maine, is because in Maine, this bill is not right, right? You have a trigger, and you have a certain set of conditions, both here and in Connecticut, that need to take place. Vermont said it needs to be two states or two years. As soon as they tacked on the phrase "two years," right, that opened them up for lawsuits, because the only thing stopping them from becoming a law now is simply time. It's the reason that, it's the reason that there could be a lawsuit that went forth on Obamacare, because the only thing stopping it was time. It was not, it wasn't any other set of requirements. So the rightness factor came into play. It's been my understanding, I've been told, that currently Vermont has spent $1.5 million just to get this to court, and that, you know, the courts, I mean, the decision just came out this week. I've only caught glimpses of it from some people and about what's happened, and I talked to the Attorney General last night about it a little bit. She said there's some good in it, some bad in it, they're looking it over. But this just gets you, this just says they couldn't dismiss it. It goes forth with the court now. Now, I think, I think it helps our position for those of us that support labeling, but once again, it's like you're on the cusp, and you can, you can either be rash, or you can say, you take a little more measured approach, and my thought is a measured approach gives you the ability to watch how this unfolds and say, what might we, what might, what we have to do differently, what might not we have to do differently? I mean, it's like, certainly, once a guy urine on his fence, better let him do it and see what his reaction is.
Senator?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that certainly one of the reasons that we looked at the term contiguous was, number one, as you've already said, was the cost of defending it if we were out there alone, which it sounds like certainly Vermont has experienced some of those costs. The other thing that I felt that the rationale behind it was that if Maine was up here all by ourselves, some of the industry folks might just say, "Hey, Maine's not a big enough player. That's the only state we've got to label our product in, we won't put it there." So my question to you is, and since we've been talking about the contiguous thing, and we're looking at five contiguous states, what if we just remove the trigger of contiguous, that takes no Hampshire out of it, but says five subsequent states? Do you think that would be a logical way to go?
Well, as you can well remember, that's what I originally supported, and the only reason that I compromised on the word contiguous, and our group compromised on the word contiguous, is it got us the government. And so if you wanted to lift the sunset and pull that word, I'd be all in favor of that. But to go, just removing the trigger opens up another whole can of worms.
And that's what I realized.
And I don't know, I mean, you guys have, you know, having been on these committees, you have all kinds of options. I don't know, you might get the Attorney General back down here to discuss how long this case may or may not take place. It might be something that you decide to hold over and see what unfolds in Vermont. I mean, it's up to you guys in the end, so. But those are some suggestions I would make, having, you know, been down this road before.
Thank you, Representative Harville. We're all set, and thank you, Lance. Catherine Paul.
The clock started? Very nervous about the clock. Good afternoon, Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry. My name is Catherine Paul. I live in Freeport, Maine, and I'm Associate Director of the Organic Consumers Association. I'm here today representing the 25,000 or so members of our organization who live here in Maine, and the million and a half consumers in our national network who are watching closely in the hope Maine lawmakers will act boldly to pass this important piece of consumer rights legislation. I don't do anything without a list, so I brought you a list today of five reasons to support LD 991. Number one, last month, 17 of the world's top cancer researchers at the World Health Organization unanimously concluded that glyphosate is a probable carcinogen. Approximately 84% of GMO crops are grown using glyphosate. Number two, the latest poll shows that 97% of Maine citizens believe they have the right to know if their food has been genetically engineered. Number three, according to numerous studies, including one conducted in 2013 by the Washington State Academy of Sciences, the cost to consumers of a label stating that a product has been genetically engineered would be negligible. Corporations like Nestle, Coca-Cola, and General Mills spend billions on advertising and marketing, and in 2014 alone, they spent $63.6 million on lobbying to defeat GMO labeling laws. It's highly unlikely these companies would risk sales and profits by jacking up the price of their products in Maine just because they were required to make a routine label change. Number four, we should not give food manufacturers a pass on GMO labels under the false premise that a GMO labeling law in Maine or anywhere else will somehow prevent the biotech industry from feeding the world. This is one of the biggest lies perpetrated by the biotech industry. Studies show that at current levels of global production, there's enough food for every person on Earth to have 3,000 calories per day. World hunger is a function of many complex factors, including poverty, natural disasters, wars, and above all, food distribution. Globally, we waste 30% of the food that we produce. It's, that number's a staggering 40% here in the U.S. GMOs are not feeding the world. In 2013, 40% of GMO crops went to produce ethanol. 45% went to feed animals on factory farms. Lastly, genetically-engineered foods provide no direct benefit whatsoever to consumers. Yet, according to hundreds of scientists around the world, there's reason to believe these foods may pose a risk to our health. At the very least, we should label them. Our opponents today will argue that Maine lawmakers should proceed cautiously, that they should wait for other states. I appeal to you today to proceed not with caution, but with courage. I ask you to disregard the mythical costs of labeling GMO foods and instead consider the burden of healthcare costs associated with cancer.
Thank you, Catherine. Any questions for Catherine? We have one from House Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Having heard the previous person sort of suggest that New Hampshire lost because this particular organization that you represented wasn't involved, can you please speak to that?
Sure, I'd love to speak to that. We don't have, as an organization, anywhere near the funds, the $63.3 or whatever million dollars, to lobby for GMO labels that our opponents have to lobby against. So we have to choose our battles one by one and combine our resources and build coalitions to come up with enough money to even be in the game. In California, we raised, our organization, 1.4 million, the coalition in general, 8 million. We were outspent by $46.4 million. So we have to concentrate our resources in one place at a time. And at the time, the coalition decision was to work in California, and then in Washington State, and then in Oregon, and now in Maine. We just can't be everywhere at once.
Thank you.
Thank you for testimony, and at this time, we're going to go to our evening special. Thank you, all.
Evening special.
And this is a senior special. If you want to admit it and would like to testify now, and you were born before April 1941, you may step forward. Yeah, are there any takers? Okay, then we will, just raise your hand if you don't. Then we'll proceed with our list. But the offer's still open if we continue to go on and you decide you'd like to take us up on the offer.
Jonathan Vermont. And I must correct myself, Jesse Dowd will be next, and then Dan Walker, Alan Loper, and Nancy.
Chairman Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, members of the committee, it's an honor to have the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm an attorney in practices constitutional and administrative law in the nation's capital and then the states, and for the federal courts and agencies. And I'm, I helped draft the Vermont bill, and under the law of...
Is your name on this?
I hope so.
Okay, Jonathan, thank you, Jonathan.
Yes, sir. Under the law of consumer deception, consumers are deceived if they are deprived of information material to a purchase. If information is said to be material, if information is said to be material, it affects a consumer's decision to buy or not to buy. And in 2011, Thomson Reuters poll found 58% of consumers say they prefer organic food. For those who buy organic, whether a food is genetically modified is material information. When a product is not revealed that it contains GMOs, consumers who wish not to purchase GMO containing foods are deceived. If they think they are buying a natural product because the label fails to reveal the presence of GMOs, they are deceived. In other words, the laws that stand today condone consumer deception, and consumers want to know, as we know, and have a right to know, if the food they buy has been genetically modified. Providing them that information is truthful labeling; depriving them of that information is an act of deception. I'm going to skip a little bit of my comments because I'm running out of time, but I'd want to focus on these constitutional issues, if I may, Chairman. In an attachment to my written remarks, you will find a brief summary of Supreme Court and Second Circuit precedent governing compelled speech. As that summary explains... As that summary explains, requiring purely factual information of health import to be communicated on a label does not violate the First Amendment. On April 27th, a United States District Court in Vermont denied an industry motion summary judgment against the Vermont GMO labeling statute, which is virtually identical to the Maine statute on this First Amendment issue. And the Maine bill, like the Vermont bill, requires communication of simple truthful information, which fact enables consumers to make informed choices. The bills of this kind have been upheld as constitutional by the Second Circuit and Electrical Manufacturers Association versus Shurel. The Maine bill is not an instance of government compelling communication of opinion, such as one ascribing a negative connotation to GMOs, which would raise a First Amendment issue. The bill simply requires disclosure of the fact of GMOs, leaving it to the public and industry to debate the relative merits of GMO containing foods. That is as it should be. No one is deceived, each has a full and fair opportunity to present conflicting opinions. The industry can advertise and communicate its view that GMOs are good, and the public can debate that.
Okay, you have 10 seconds to make up for my interruption. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I would like to point out that it really is the case that because of the amount of money the industry has involved with this, no matter what you do, no matter, regardless of when you do it, if it affects GMOs, they will sue related to it. So it's not a question of if you delay action on this, it's somehow going to cause litigation to go away, or to cause these issues to go away. They're going to be here, and the issue regarding consumer informed choice is an economic issue for a consumer.
Okay, let's see if we have any questions. Questions? I'm sorry to have to interrupt you.
That's quite all right.
Thank you for your testimony. I did not see any.
Mr. Michael Hansen.
Senator Edgcombe, Representative Hickman, and members of, and distinguished members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to present testimony in support of LD 991. My name is Michael Hansen, and I'm a senior scientist at Consumers Union, the policy and advocacy arm of Consumer Reports. I've worked on the issue of genetically engineered foods for more than 25 years at the state, national, and international levels. We urge you to remove the trigger clause. There is new urgency for labeling of GE foods. Two months ago, 17 experts from 11 countries brought together by the World Health Organization unanimously concluded that glyphosate and herbicide, previously thought to be relatively benign to pesticide regulators, was quote, "probably carcinogenic to humans." This classification was based on limited evidence from case-controlled epidemiology studies which found a link with non-Hodgkin's lymphoma in studies from U.S., Canada, and Sweden, and sufficient evidence from animal studies. In addition, there was strong evidence for the mechanism of action, or how glyphosate may cause maleated cancer, e.g., genotoxicity and oxidative stress. Of the 17 experts, two were from the U.S. EPA, one from the U.S. National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences, and one from California EPA. The chair of the committee was Dr. Erin Blair, who prior to retiring, led the occupational cancer unit at the National Cancer Institute for 30 years. This finding that glyphosate is probably carcinogenic to humans is important since virtually all GE food crops have been engineered to withstand the weed killer glyphosate. As a result, as the acreage of GE crops has expanded, so has glyphosate use. In 1995, the first year before GE crops came on the market, there were 20 million pounds of glyphosate were used in U.S. agriculture. By 2012, that figure had increased more than 10 times to 280 million pounds. This drastic increase in glyphosate use has almost certainly increased residues on food. Although the USDA's pesticide data program doesn't collect data on glyphosate residues in food, one study that did look found glyphosate residues in all the samples of soy they tested, which was from 10 different labs growing GE soy in Iowa. Labeling of GE foods would allow consumers concerned about potential residues to maximize, to minimize their glyphosate exposure. If Maine is concerned about whether the GE labeling bill would hold up in court, the decision of the district court announced earlier this week is reassuring. The court decided that labels such as quote, "produced with genetic engineering," or quote, "partially produced with genetic engineering," do not violate the Commerce Clause of the Constitution, are not preempted by federal law, and do not violate the First Amendment rights of the companies producing GE foods. The court also dismissed the idea that GE labeling bill is only based on a desire to gratify consumer curiosity. Indeed, the court stated, quote, "the safety of food products, the protection of the environment, and the accommodation of religious beliefs and practices are all quintessential government interests,"
Dr. Hansen.
"as is the state's desire to promote informed consumer decision making." I guess I'll end there. I'll just say that they also said it's not political speech or controversial because the disclosure requirement, quote, "remains a factual disclosure regarding the food products and ingredients made in conjunction with the purchase."
Were you referring to Roundup when you talked about--
Yes, glyphosate is--
Like Roundup free corn or--
Yes, virtually, yes. Virtually all the engineered crops have this trait in it. 94% of soybean is engineered, all Roundup-ready. 93% of corn is engineered, 89% has the Roundup resistance gene. Sugar beets, 99% are engineered, all Roundup-ready. Canola, it's 93%, that's all herbicide tolerant. So the Maine crops--
So that corn is fed to livestock as well as humans for cornflakes, for example?
Pardon?
90% of the corn produced in this country, you said, is Roundup-ready?
Yes.
It's used in corn?
Yes.
And also to feed livestock?
That's correct. So actually, 89% of all the corn has that trait in it, but most corn actually has multiple copies of genes for herbicide resistance, and then multiple copies of genes for what's called insect tolerance, this BT toxin gene. But it's the glyphosate that's causing the problems. The reason that's expanded drastically is basically because there's an epidemic of glyphosate tolerant weeds. Monsanto told us that since glyphosate is a modified plant hormone, that plants can evolve resistance. That's why in 1990, I had a debate with Monsanto. They told us weeds won't become resistant. Now globally, there are 28 species of weeds that are resistant to glyphosate, 14 species in the U.S., 50% of farms have these weeds on them. In fact, it's so serious that in Georgia, there's 100,000 acres of cotton that because of palm or pigweed, they can't, it's immune to all the herbicides, so they're having to go back and use machetes. And because these weeds are becoming resistant, the new wave of engineered crops that are coming on the market are not going to be resistant to glyphosate and to 4D and other herbicides.
Okay, well, you have mutations that occur in nature--
Right.
--which is genetically modified. I mean, they're modified by nature.
Right.
Okay. For example, that's how the pole herford came about, et cetera. The herford that didn't have horns in it longer. So what I'm asking, is there any difference to a mutation occurring in a crop that continues to be planted and where a man or woman does it?
Yes, actually, there's a fundamental difference between genetic engineering and conventional breeding. Because conventional breeding, which looks for mutations that naturally occur, those are within a, think of it as an evolutionary context. The way they do genetic engineering, they're literally firing these genes in, and they have no control over where they insert themselves in the genome. That can lead to potential problems. That's why globally, the Codex Samentarius, which is a food standards-setting organization of the U.N., and, which is, which is administered by WHO and FAO, this is written into the World Trade Agreement. And what the World Trade Agreement says is, if there are challenges that have to do with food safety, any of the guidelines or standards that come out of Codex are trade legal. Well, Codex spent eight years and developed and basically said genetically engineered or genetically modified crops are different, they should be required to go through safety assessments, and it's also okay to label them. We cannot meet that global standard, and that's why certain crops from the U.S., China, for example, hasn't been taking U.S. corn since 2013 because of this engineered MAR-162. And we can't complain.
I don't want to, we're going to hold a lot of people up, because you have a lot of valuable information. How far away do you live from Augusta?
I live in Yonkers, New York, just north of New York City. But Consumers Union, we have 8 million--
Well, I was asking, you know, with your wealth of knowledge, we may ask some questions during the work session, if you were available, you know.
Depending on when that is, if I'm available, I would come up here for that. Because I also worked, you know, this whole global process. We were at all the meetings. I've been an international expert to help come up with how they do these safety assessments. And I would just point out, you should really read that court decision. Because it really, for the labeling of a GE, it shot down everything. The only thing that's an open question is the natural. That's the one where you run into problems. That is saying that something that is labeled GE can't bear the natural label. Because basically what the court said is, since you haven't defined what natural means, how can you say it's misleading if we have nothing to compare it to? And they do have a point there.
Could you leave your contact information with that clerk?
Yes.
And maybe she could inform you. It is next Thursday. Okay, our work session has been scheduled for next Thursday, so.
I'll track, but actually, I should be able to be here for that.
Could you leave her with your--
Yes.
Make sure she would know how to--
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, because you have a wealth of knowledge, it could be helpful. Thank you, Dr. Heather Spalding.
And members of the Joint Standing Committee on Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, my name is Heather Spalding, and I'm Deputy Director of the Organic Farmers and Gardeners Association, MOFCO. On behalf of our 11,000 dues-paying members throughout the state, I thank the members of the 126 legislatures, helping to achieve its landmark policy of labeling foods derived from genetically modified organisms. We all worked very hard for many years to establish a policy that we could all agree on. The only dissenting voices in the last legislature were those of the policymakers who strongly advocated for labeling, but wanted to do what LD 991 seeks to do now, speed up the implementation process by removing the need for a regional mass of consumers. I also thank Representative Denfie for introducing this bill, and all of the first-year legislators who have sponsored LD 991. We are encouraged by U.S. District Court Judge Christina Rice's ruling earlier this week regarding the GMO labeling law in Vermont. Judge Rice ruled against the Grocery Manufacturers Association and other industry groups in a request for a preliminary order to block the law from going into effect as scheduled on July 1, 2016. She stated, "The safety of food products, the protection of the environment, and the accommodation of religious beliefs and practices are all quintessential governmental interests, as is the state's desire to promote informed consumer decision making." Here, here, and here, here. The Vermont decision affirms the constitutionality of labeling laws and gives us a green light to move forward with the implementation of Maine's law. If manufacturers of GMO technologies think they are so fantastic, why aren't they advertising them to the public? Please don't allow Monsanto back lobbying efforts in Maine and Congress to keep consumers in the dark. It is essential that Maine defend its mandatory labeling law. As Representative Shelley Pingree advised me this two years ago, it is wise for states to establish mandatory GMO labeling laws, because Congress is unlikely to do it anytime soon. Currently, Congress is considering one bill that would require mandatory labeling nationally, and another that would preempt a state's right to require mandatory labeling. Concerned citizens must engage in these discussions, but we must not lose ground in Maine. Thank you for your careful consideration of this matter.
Any questions for Heather? Senior, thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Jesse Dowling.
Okay. All right, well, then, Representative Hickman, Senator Edgcombe, and distinguished members of the Joint Standing Committee on Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, I am standing for you today to testify in favor of LD 991. My name is Jesse Dowling. I'm a farmer and cheesemaker in Whitefield, and I would like to see the act to amend Maine's genetically modified food products labeling law pass, because in 2013, I worked with a broad coalition of farmers and consumer organizations in support of LD 718, the GMO labeling law passed in 2013 and signed into law in 2014. And I helped coordinate over 120 farms, small businesses, and nonprofit organizations that signed a letter addressed to you, your committee, in support of passing that bill. And for my work as the grassroots orgunizer with MOFCO, I had the opportunity to speak with hundreds of concerned citizens across the state during that time, ranging from consumers, moms concerned about what they're feeding their kids, farmers, small grocers, small business owners, doctors, teachers, professors, and other countless individuals that overwhelmingly want to see genetically modified organisms labeled here in Maine. I have never worked on a campaign in my entire life that has had such an overwhelming support from so many different people, from so many different backgrounds. I literally never came across somebody of the public that was like, no, this is not a good idea, never. That didn't happen, and I spent all of my time talking to people about it. It's time to honor what the people of Maine want and amend this law, to put it in effect now. With more and more GMO food in the marketing pipeline, we're talking about apples today, and what's next, potatoes, and who knows? It's your responsibility to ensure the public that they do have the right to know that they're buying with their hard-earned money, with their feeding their children, and what we're putting in our bodies. And just I want to end on the fact that I think we keep ignoring that glyphosate is poured directly onto these plants, that's an herbicide. It's designed to kill life, and people then eat this plant. Look at it, and it's exact what we're actually doing, and maybe people will go into that. Thanks.